It's a very important. Important issue. We invited you all here today to discuss deed restrictions as a tool to support housing for our community members. As you are all aware, the housing situation has become rather bleak here in Lake County. This problem was only highlighted by the COVID crisis. The unmet needs committee has provided community members with over $675,000 to prevent eviction and utility termination. This is remarkable service they have provided, but it is concerning that we have so many families who were moments away from such disasters. Let's dig into the hard work of implementing tools to help resolve the root of the problem. We find many of our community members in. Today's presentation will be at a fairly high level. In subsequent meetings, we intend to get more into detail. Please hold your questions to the end of the presentation when we'll open it up for general discussion. It is the intent of the deed restriction to provide community housing opportunities for community members with prioritization of persons who are currently or have actively been employed or self-employed in Lake County. And who also provide goods and services to individuals, businesses, or institutional operations in Lake County. With the acknowledgement that over 70% of our community members commute out of the county daily, deed restricted community housing will also be available to them as well through a tiered system, which we will describe in more detail in future meetings. During this process, it is important to stay focused on the deed restriction documents and prevent digression into other housing tool topics. This will be a heavy lift and keeping this intention in mind will help us stay on track.
Hey, everybody. So there's a lot of people on this meeting today and I don't want to. Well, we don't really have time to announce everybody. So I'm just going to briefly go through who is on the meeting. So for your presenters today, you have Paul Anderson from the school district, myself, Greg Lobby, Anne Schneider, and then at the end, we will have Michael Yerman for.
Delona, you should go out and check the mailbox.
We'll have Michael Yerman to help answer questions during the discussion section. He is a subject matter expert. We also have elected officials present with the board of county commissioners and city council members. So the appointed officials we have today would be county planning commission, city planning and zoning members as well as housing authority board members. And then we also have community members who are here to learn both from the housing coalition and just the community at large. We thank you all for being here today.
Good evening, everybody. This is Greg and I want to thank the people in our community who are willing to step up and be part of this meeting because there's a lot to learn about deed restrictions and housing in general. So I appreciate that. I'll say in 2019, the housing coalition worked with consultants to determine what housing tools would best serve the needs of our community. Many recommendations came out of the report, including deed restrictions. Therefore, the housing coalition created a subcommittee to focus on deed restrictions. A deed restriction is a legal document that limits how residential properties can be used. That's both in regards to who can live there and how much the property can be sold for. And those are both very important. We'll be discussing that tonight. One of the main concerns about deed restrictions is that it limits the amount of equity an owner can earn while in the house. However, we must keep in mind with the current status of the market, you know, community members are very unlikely to be able to purchase a home at all. Therefore, having the opportunity to purchase a deed restricted unit is often a big test to begin with. Also, there are likely subsidies that went into developing the deed restriction home, and we want to ensure that the property could serve our community in perpetuity. Industry standards dictate utilization of the legal document called a restriction in conjunction with a living document called the community guidelines. The deed restriction will reference the community guidelines and details that we want to be able to change will be outlined in the community guidelines. Christie, can you share the action plan?
It is in the chat. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. And as Paul touched on early earlier in the meeting, there are a number of tools that we are simultaneously working on relative to housing and some of those have to do with with various aspects of housing, you know, not the least of which are deed restrictions. And so we're going to, we're going to, our focus tonight is going to be on deed restrictions. And if you're interested in discussing these other tools that you feel need to be discussed, we'll be having a series of meetings. All these things will be covered. And so we appreciate your attention tonight. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you. I'm going to talk a little bit about the process that got us to where we are right now. When we started this work quite some time ago, we had Amy Maston as part of our group and she had a wonderful knowledge of working on deed restrictions in other communities. And so she really pointed out to us the not looking to reinvent the wheel with this and that there were excellent examples all over the state for us to turn to and look and learn from. And so we had meetings, we hosted meetings and talked with Summit County and the Gunnison Housing Authority and Breckenridge and Chaffey County Departments of Housing and representatives from that Chaffey County Housing Trust. And they were all so willing to share their successes with us and and their pitfalls. And so that has really aided us in this process. And really, you know, gave us a good base, a solid basis based on what other experiences within the state have been. And then at the end of last year, we were super fortunate to have a subject matter expert, as Christie had mentioned out earlier, and Michael Yerman joining our team to help us through this process. He has worked on the development and administering deed restrictions within the Crestabute community and he's just well of information. He is also affiliated with the Southern Colorado Economic Development District. So thank you, Michael, for all of your assistance and and we wouldn't be where quite where we are right now without his help. As Greg mentioned, this deed restriction consisted two documents. And basically what I just hit on that we went out and looked for was was the legal document, the deed restriction, which is the legal basis and sets the expectation. The next is the community guidelines and these up on the screen right now are some details that are usually held within those guidelines. What are the qualification process? Who do we want to serve with our, within our unique community? Who are we looking to protect housing for and and provide it and sustain it for? Utilization, how can we utilize these units? And Michael shared with us that in many communities, there has to be a lottery process because of the amount of interest. How do we work on the development of new units and how do we maintain what we've built in perpetuity? And monitoring and compliance. And of course, as with any process, there's always a grievance process. So these are, these are the basis of what we would want to have your input on upcoming in this work that's being done. During subsequent meetings, we're going to bring you items from the community guidelines that we need your feedback on. Some items are based on a legal basis or a lending standard. And so those are again relying on an industry standard as we've kind of spoken about before. Following this meeting, we will send out some post work, including the community guideline draft and a document listing items that we need stakeholder feedback on. Thank you all.
To really look at the timeline, we want to highlight what we anticipate the work will need to look like between now and the end of the year to accomplish our goal. We're currently in the light blue stage of stakeholder direction. This is the first in a series of meetings that we hope you can attend. There are many decisions left to be made that are community minded. We hope that work will be done by the fall. This fall, we will be looking for lender and title agents to review the documents to ensure they are not problematic. The next step will be to have legal review. We wanted to be mindful of utilization of legal resources, therefore waiting to do that last. Please be aware that everything we are recommending and the options we are providing for you have been done elsewhere. We are confident of their legality. We are hoping to finish these documents before December, in December 2021, in preparation to be able to utilize them in the future development in Leadville and Lake County.
Okay, everybody. So that is our initial presentation. We're going to open it up for discussion and I'm going to ask that when you have a question, let's present one question. And then we will address that one question. And then if you have more questions, we can continue to come back to you. And so whoever would like to speak first, go ahead. You can also work through and start with board of county commissioners if that would be helpful. Okay. Jeff Beadler.
I'll hop in. Is that me? No, someone else. Okay. So my understanding of how deed restrictions work is, I mean, I think a couple of things that were helpful for me and I'd love, if I'm wrong, please correct me. One is, I mean, so deed restrictions, no, no, no one's going to slap a deed restriction on someone's existing private home. This is for new construction that has received some form of public subsidy or incentive. And that's the, and that's the deal, right, is you get that incentive and in return, you have to give something back to the community. And the deed restriction is that thing. So I see nodding from Greg.
I would say to that point, I mean, I think you're absolutely correct. I think it needs to be understood that almost always deed restrictions are a matter of a negotiation and usually there has to be some sort of incentive. But, you know, relative to that. However, we've actually had people come to the housing coalition and say, you know, we'd like to de-strict our home just, you know, just because when we sell it. And they could do that. They could put, they could put that in their deed.
Yeah. And then there was a great comment in the chat from, from Gabby sort of that, that, you know, it, so I, yeah, probably need to clarify what I said. It's like, no, no one is going to involuntarily, you know, have a deed restriction slapped on their existing inventory. So, you know, I'll say that, and that was very helpful for me. I can't remember who first like said it to me that clearly, but that's very helpful for me to realize, like, we still need to build new houses. You know, deed restrictions do not operate on their own to make way the magic wand. I guess one, one question as we sort of think about though, as we think about how to write the community guidelines is, I could imagine, I mean, that public subsidy could come in different forms and have different values. So is there like one set of community guidelines? Or do we want to try to make it more complicated with some tiers or is that too complicated? You know, what, what's the, what's the thinking? And again, sorry if I'm getting like, you know, off, off the designated topics, but, but I was curious, like, if there's like one set of community guidelines that attach to the.
That's a great question. I'm going to give this one to Michael to address.
Sure. So that's a, that's a really good question. And I think most communities, this, again, this is a, this is a community discussion on how you decide to do that. But it, there are definitely different ways to write deed restrictions. And for instance, in Crestabute, the, the, the housing stock we manage, we would have deed restrictions that deed restricted the, the price appreciation and occupancy and who qualified and AMIs. And then we had deed restrictions, which I would call a deed restriction light, which were just guaranteeing that there was a long-term resident or a long-term rental on the property. So the, the actual recorded document against the property is a deed restriction. And then when you start talking about the community guidelines, that sets who qualifies for those new products. But yes, you can absolutely adjust the deed restriction and typically like you stated, based on the subsidy and the amount that the, the, the local governments put in is normally how you kind of determine how much you want to, you want to restrict a property.
Yeah. So if you want to imagine the deed restriction document as hard and fast, right? It stays and it refers to the community guidelines, which is a living document that whoever the administering body has the right to make adjustments based on guidance. Probably from elected officials. Great question, Jeff. Do you have any more?
Oh, I'll let other people.
I'd like to, I'd like to refer to Jeff's thought about tiers. Because deed restrictions can, let's just say for the sake of argument, you build 100 houses with subsidies. And, and, and the school district wants to participate in 10 of those 100 houses. And so 10 of those may be, may be tiered so that first right of refusal could be school district employees. And then, you know, then you could have tiers in terms of eligibility below that. That's just, that's one of the, one example of things that we think will probably happen as we go forward.
Thank you, Greg. I see that Gabby is unmuted and then after her, we will go to Dana. Go ahead, Gabby.
Yeah. So a follow up to Jeff's question, who is the institutional body that is going to kind of be the arbiter of the deed restrictions and kind of hold them in place? Because my understanding is that the city might have some policies that would interact with deed restrictions. So a new development comes in, we require X member of houses to be deed restricted. The county might have a different policy, the school that, you know, there's, there's going to be like a lot of different players all working simultaneously that may be using deed restrictions. So like, who's, who's holding the deed restrictions?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And the answer is, we don't know yet. And that will be one of the things that we are hoping that you can help us decide. Traditionally, there are two administrating bodies that we could look at and that would be creating a department of housing or through the housing authority. We do not want to say that the housing authority should take it on. We would like for them to have that internal discussion and see if they have the capacity and things along those lines. Of course, regardless of whether, where it lies, it's going to need funding. This is not something that operates entirely on its own. Gabby, did you have another question?
Well, that's, that's all for now. Let's have another stuff.
Thank you, Gabby. Dana.
Hi, I actually think my question is the same as Gabby's and that I gathered from mayor, what you said is that somebody who already owns a property can voluntarily deed restrict it. But for new construction, who owns the deed restricted home, which I think is what Gabby just asked.
And I'm going to give that one to Anne. Do you know?
So you still hold that the individual actually purchases the home and has, has title to the property. So the deed restriction is an administrative position to oversee, but title of the home is given to the, the property owner. When you ask who owns the home, it would, it's the individual that we've, that the guidelines have carved out the opportunity for. So they hold the property entitled. The discussion is more about who is the administering body and oversees the administration of the deed restriction.
Thank you for clarifying Gabby's question, Dana. And I'm sorry that I didn't answer it fully the first time.
They're actually different questions, but that's okay.
Dana, did you have any other questions?
Just maybe relating to that and is that if an individual owns the home and they've purchased it under, through this deed restriction body, then who is responsible for maintenance? Like if they are the unlucky ones who happen to be living there when the roof needs replacement? Is that low income, presumably lower income individual responsible for that amount of work?
So maintenance requirements are part of the deed restriction and a lot of this programming has to do with education on the front end, making sure that it's really clear to someone when they're getting into a deed restricted unit, what the expectations are going to be. We'll dive into that a little more in subsequent meetings.
Just a quick response to you, Dana. I think where you're getting at is, so I have some colleagues that live in Breckenridge, de-restricted homes. And the appreciation caps somewhat disincentivize them to like make huge improvements. For example, like a kitchen remodel, you're not going to like get the, reap the benefits of that added value. And because you're kind of in the secondary market of deed restrictions, but you still are responsible for all the maintenance. There's just like some weird market effects of like your appreciation cap is only so high so that a huge improvement like a kitchen remodel, you might not reap all the benefits you would on the open market.
Thank you, Gabby. Anyone else willing to go next? Okay, if not, then I'll keep going down the list. Kayla, Marcella, do you have any questions?
No, I think my question was really answered by Dana. It was the first question that she had asked. So that, that's kind of all I've got for right now.
Thank you so much, Kayla. I'm going to circle to county commissioners now. Max, do you have any questions tonight?
Are you talking about city council here?
Yes.
Good, good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'm Max Frigensi. Actually, I don't have any questions. I'm, I'm looking over the, the housing action plan from 2019. And I think it's, it's a bunch of good steps in the right direction on trying to define what this group is trying to do. And I'll keep my comments for later, but I think we're, I just appreciate everybody's efforts on this very important piece of work that you're doing here for deed restrictive housing and providing housing to our, to our citizens in Lake County.
Thank you, Max. Jane, do you have any questions tonight?
I apologize. I lost my internet connection, so I'm not sure if this question was answered. But I have a question as far as how, so how is this actually funded?
Great question. So in May, we will be having a similar presentation to this, but it will be discussing funding mechanisms. And I'm glad that you are making that connection that deed restriction cannot happen without funding mechanisms. So please stay tuned for that conversation in May.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, Christie, can I follow up on that? Can I ask a? And this is probably a question for Michael, but do we have a ballpark of how much funding it would take to administer deed restrictions in a community our size?
That's a great question. So typically your deed restriction, there's a deed restriction has, the, the thing that you're interested about in the actual deed restriction is protecting the interest of the subsidy that the local governments have provided to provide to you. And what it's called is a first right of refusal in the event of a foreclosure is really kind of the, is the kind of the big piece that you're worried about is that if someone's foreclosed on, the way, the way the mortgage industry is, is that if the property is foreclosed on, the title is typically wiped clean. Previously, there were deed restrictions that survive foreclosure. Unfortunately, lenders will not lend on that anymore after the last recession. So there is a basically a 60-day remedy period in which a, which either a municipality or the county could potentially step in or the administrative body. As it relates, and what I have found, and again, I'm using the, I come from the Gunnison Crestabute, Gunnison Valley model, Mount Crestabute model. We actually found it, it was in the best interest to allow both the county, the town and the housing authority over there to be able to step in and, and step in in the event of a foreclosure for most of our properties because it, who knew what kind of reserves that might be? You know, who might have the reserves to actually do it. And typically because the foreclosure is only the price of the note and the actual appreciation of the, of the deed restriction, the restrictions allow appreciation. So someone's been paying it down. So typically you're buying, when you do the step in as a municipality, you're buying it at a lower price than what it's probably going to be able to be back on the market for. So it's advantageous for local government to step in and then redo a lottery. Now, your second question, and maybe I'll just answer maybe the administrative question of who, who does all of this? The, we did have a housing authority that, that basically each of the municipalities paid dues to, to do administration, run lotteries and such. The, the most time intensive portion of any deed restriction program besides, and I'm not including the actual development of the, the housing because that's a huge other piece of the puzzle, but the actual of the program are lotteries and qualifying and qualifying folks. And I will say that it's not, it's really a, the first lottery I did, I, we did in town, in town hall. And it was a pretty uncomfortable process for a government staff person to do. When you, when you review people's documents for qualifications, you're looking at tax returns, all these, you know, W2s. They're providing you their financial income. And as, as a government employee, that's really not our role to know what, what everybody's incomes and such are. So that's why you typically have a outside agency that goes through the process of looking at, at that. But, you know, you're looking at at least one full-time employee that is a director to host that lottery. And then as you build up your housing stock, there are, you know, at that point, they, through sales and stuff like that, there are, there are mechanisms that through the process of creating housing, you're able to bring in revenue. And then that typically allows for additional staff, but you're, you are looking at at least one full-time employee.
Off, off of that, like even, even with a fledgling program that has zero deeds to manage. That was a question.
Oh, yeah.
Should we aim, we should aim for funding a full-time staff position from the get-go. Okay.
Yeah. So I also have had the opportunity to look at the budget of Summit County Combined Housing Authority and Gunnison Valley Regional Housing Authority and talk to them a little bit about like programming and, and technology and, and things along those lines. I, I'm guessing that that would probably run us to start around $60,000 and go, go down to probably about $40,000 annually. And then, you know, I, I don't know how much we would need to compensate an executive staff person. But yeah, I would say ballpark, we're looking at anywhere between $80,000 and $100,000 annually to administer this program. Okay. Noah, while you're up, do you have any other questions?
Not preliminary questions. I'm curious like what, what the group's thoughts are around the draft community guidelines and what priorities and kind of qualifications y'all have come up with, but happy to wait for later or a future meeting for, for those. And again, also appreciate all the work that you've put into this.
Thank you. Yeah, we are, the post work is going to be to send out, to, to review the community guidelines that we hope to send out early next week. They are a 40-page document, so it will be lots of. They are a 40-page document, so it will be lots of super fun reading. Tim Hill, do you have any questions tonight?
I guess what I'm interested in is. Why I'm getting an echo. Is that right? That's what I'm most interested in are those guidelines. Other than that, I'm just, just kind of here to glean, glean some information. So I really don't have much else.
Thank you, Tim. Looking for my next. City council member. Ms. Dallas, do you have any questions tonight?
Thank you, Christie. Well, I'm excited to see that this ball is moving forward and happy to help coordinate. Next meeting dates and times and facilitate any documents you need sent out. So make sure that I can get any conduit of information out. And I think this is a step in the right direction and hopefully we can move this forward along with parcels of ground. And RFPs and be able to be shovel ready soon.
Thank you. It's kind of hard for me to go through the two pages and find everyone, so I'm just going to go through who's next on my list. Adam Giffen from the Housing Authority, do you have any questions tonight?
Oh, not, no specific questions. Just trying to learn what the deed restriction situation is all about. That's why I'm here.
Well, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. Reed McCullough, do you have any questions? See a head shake. Lupe, do you have any questions tonight?
Yeah, no, I'm interested because just hearing the conversation between Michael and Noah. And then also with Gabby who brought up the point about the who's going to enforce the deed restriction. So. I'm just thinking about transparency and equity. So who, how we will ensure to have people in. The deed restriction and the, the people like governing the deed restriction that is equitable and represents the community. As well as, I know that you were hearing who would qualify for housing, affordable housing. For, even thinking about for undocumented community out here if they don't have a tax return or have. These proper documentations in order to qualify for affordable housing. How will we ensure that these folks are being heard and represented when we're thinking about affordable housing in, in Lake County?
Thank you so much for bringing that up, Lupe. I will say that our housing goals are aimed at. Community members who make between 80 and 120% area median income. And then we were also going to be pursuing some rental housing that isn't associated with deed restriction. For some of our lower wage workers. Unfortunately, we don't have a workaround right now for. Undocumented people to purchase homes. It gets really tricky. You have to have a social security number. There. Are nearly no lenders that will lend with an ITIN number. However, we're key, we're. Reaching out to lenders and trying to find people who are willing to do that. We appreciate bringing the equity lens and. Will continue to work as hard as we can on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Yeah. Max Cohen, do you have any questions tonight?
I'm just here to listen and learn.
Thank you, Max. Bryce, do you have any questions tonight?
None at this time, but thanks for starting the conversation and I look forward to hearing more.
Thank you. Paul Clarkson, do you have any questions tonight?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Palin.
No, all of my questions have already been brought up. Thanks for hosting. I love it. Amy Tate.
Nope, I'm just listening.
Thank you. Lucretia.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Marla.
Christie, thanks. This is a great forum and at this point I don't have any questions. I'm looking forward to the next meeting to take the deeper dive.
I see that the newspaper is on, the Leadville Herald. Do you have any questions today? Okay, hearing none. I do think that Anne Schneider has some comments. That were submitted to her that she wanted to share.
Well, I was just gonna, I spoke earlier with the Lake County Planning Commission Chairman Heather Lynn. And she just wanted me to share. She had to scoot off here. She was here at the beginning of the, of the presentation. But she saw that deed restrictions would be beneficial in our PUD process at, at the county. We are looking to potentially be in negotiation with some new developers. Through a PUD process and the deed restriction would be an efficient tool to be able to have. To utilize in those negotiations. So she just wanted to offer her support of the work for the group.
That's great. Thank you. And then I see Jeff Fiedler has his hand raised.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I wanted to follow up. You kind of touched on, on this, but I had a question of like how this might work with adding rental units. To the affordable housing market and whether that is possible under. The community guidelines or whether you need to go through a different mechanism. Because, you know, I mean, owning a house is not for everyone. You know what I mean, by choice or financially or whatever. And it seems like we need to be tackling both housing, housing inventory stocks.
I'm going to give this one to Michael, but I'm also first going to answer that we're hoping and. We're hoping that to pursue a low-income housing tax credit. Project that would provide a lot of apartments for our low-income community. But Michael, can you please address apartments through deed restriction?
The Lytech, which is what Chrissy just discussed, they actually have, through that program, it actually has a pretty extensive deed restriction. And so that, and that program is always, is, is pretty much one, one of the biggest tools to. Create rental housing. It's very, very, very difficult to finance rental housing in Colorado because of taper. So local government can't, you know, if you think about the cost of an $8 million complex, local government typically can't. Build that and just take it all out of reserves and then, you know, hope to get income back, right? So that's why you have to use these programs like Lytech and they have their own set of deed restrictions. One, one program, now I will say, the, the two non-Lytech successful programs that. We use in Crestabute, we're working with local employers like your school district and your local governments. And then two, we did a business rental. Program where businesses were able to purchase a unit and then rent them back to their employees. That deed restriction, no, because they are purchasing it, the, the business. That deed restriction is just like a purchase deed restriction. Where the business is able to get appreciation and if they go to sell, then they have a max sales price when they sell and then it's. When the unit is back on the market, the lottery process and community guidelines apply. However, the deed restriction has specifically in there that the business is allowed to create and rent the property. Through the, the nutrition, they just have to be, you know, they have to meet the guidelines, which is a local resident or whatever you decide. That they would qualify that they're, that the person in the unit is actually, you know, obviously is not somebody who's here on vacation or something. So, and it actually has been very lucrative, that, that program because businesses that. Are able to retain employees through their housing. And if you think about. You know, a conventional loan, it's 20% down and then hopefully that business is recouping. Their rent or their mortgage through the rent that the employees are providing. So that, that will actually prove that there was a lot of, lot of discussion around that. Because I know our, our valley was one of the first to try to attempt that. But it, it has proven very successful and the business community really, really benefited from that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any more questions?
I, I'd like to, to answer back also to Jeff's. When a developer puts in for a Lytech grant in, in that process, they basically have to. To, as part of, as part of their. Grant application, they have to let, you know, DOWA or CHAFA know, you know, that they're going to have a certain percentage. At 40% AMI and a certain percentage of 60% AMI and, and it would be mixed use. Some will be market rate. So it, it, they, they define it from the very beginning before they ever build it.
Thanks, Greg. I'm actually going to share in the chat the link to AMIs. It is published by CHAFA, Colorado Housing Finance Authority. It's sorted by county and you'll have to scroll down to the L's, but it's pretty helpful. It has the breakdowns for income ranges and it also has recommended. Rental ra- ranges to for those incomes. So that's a helpful. Document for you guys all to have access to. Any other questions tonight? I tried to, I tried to make it clear that the first meeting was going to be pretty high level. But I know you guys got a lot going on and got lots of emails, so. Hope this was good for everybody. If we don't have any more questions, what I'd like to do next is at our next meeting in May. Since there are so many of you involved, I've found out that there are four. Available dates for the entire group to participate in. So I have created a poll so that we can. Set the date now. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay, there's two questions. The first question is about the date and we have actually ruled out. The 20th, so please don't select that one now. And then the second one is the time of the meeting where, since we are going to be going in deeper next time. We are going to have an hour and a half instead of an hour. I'm going to leave this open for just a little while. Go ahead and look at your calendars and all that jazz. I'll leave this up for just a few more seconds. Has anybody not got the opportunity to vote yet? Or needs help with it? Okay, so it looks like the best date is going to be Wednesday, the 19th from 5:00 to 6:30. Is anyone? Opposed to that time? That date and time?
Sorry, could you say that again?
Sure. Wednesday, the 19th from 5:00 to 6:30. Okay, so what you can expect next is that on the first couple of days of the next week. You will get an email with the notes from this meeting. We've also recorded the meeting, so we will include that. A link to that. And you will also get the community guidelines along with another document that says. Look on this page for the items that we need your feedback on. And as always, do not hesitate to reach out to me by email, text or phone call. I'm happy to. Meet with you in the interim. Does anybody have any last call comments, questions, concerns before we wrap up just a little bit early tonight? I just want to thank you guys so much for taking the time. I know everybody's really busy. There's a million competing things going on. So it means a lot and thank you for dedicating your time to providing housing for your community. Community members, sorry, committee members, if you could stay on for just a minute. So I can touch base with you before you leave. That'd be great. Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you. Appreciate this.